Do I speak now?
Yep.
My name is Antonio Garcia and I have a boat outside of the marina, which is the marina that facilitates most of the boats in these slips. Most boats moor their boats by anchor like near Fairhaven and supposedly they've been there undisturbed in Bellingham, Washington, history. Nobody has ever contested any of them being allowed to moor their boats. Maybe because they don't want to contest maritime law, which goes all the way back to the U.N. and Geneva and the history of maritime law goes back before the Roman Empire. You know, and I actually received a notice along with a bunch of other people, which I don't specifically know all their names personally, because some of the people that own boats outside of Fairhaven live private lives. You know, some of them are retired military, war veterans, et cetera. I received a notice on the 18th, I think, of last month and it states that mooring in Bellingham, Washington, in the bay is prohibited. And I received the letter, I think, I believe, on Saturday, but that's just to my better knowledge. I could be wrong, maybe it was a Friday. But that Monday, I actually talked to the person whose signature was on that notice, which is his name. Am I allowed to say his name or no? He's a planner. He's a really nice man. He's actually a pleasant man to speak with. I don't have anything bad to say about him, you know. And I talked with that man on Monday about the notice and there was, within the notice, which I forgot to bring today, which I'm sorry, there is BMC codes and to my own ignorance, you know, I didn't really have a reference to say what these codes really more or less were about, so I had to have him reference it for me. And basically it just says that there's no longer allowed mooring for boats in Bellingham Bay and they have to literally go out somewhere past five miles to another island somewhere So for the last, since I've gotten that notice, I've, me personally, I'm afraid of a subpoena if I don't comply to the notice. And I've actually asked some of the honest citizens of this city, of this state, of this government, you know, their honest opinion without me, you know, distressing my own feelings and they were actually, in my defense, believing that boats do have a right to be in the bay of Bellingham. And some people are Navy, some people are retired Navy, other people have maybe some Coast Guard experience and I guess there is laws like Admiralty and maritime law-
Thirty seconds, please.
-maritime law that, you know, allow some boats to be in certain bays. And I'm just bringing it to your attention. I guess I'm in contest of the letter, of the notice and that's about it. I mean, I don't, it's a 30-day notice. I really don't have anything else to say. I wish I could, only have 20 seconds probably left, 10 seconds.
Just for your information, it sounds like what was on the notice was a BMC code, which is the Bellingham Municipal Code, which we don't have anything to do with. This is the county, but the folks across the street there, that's the Bellingham City Hall and that's the folks that are in charge of the Bellingham Municipal Code. So I don't know if that's where you talk to a planner at the city of Bellingham.
Well, I was hoping that there would be like a Democratic constitute, you know, where you speak your opinion on behalf of whatever issue or notices that might be issued by the city or the state or whatever.
Yeah, and the city council meets every other Monday and they have an open session like this and they're the decision makers on that piece of the code.
I see. I'm sorry.
But if you can leave your name and a contact information, I'll be glad to track down and make sure we put you in touch with the right people.
Yeah, and on the notice, I had to return partially the notice Xerox and I put void in return because I didn't know if just having me hold the notice would be me accepting the requirements, you know, because the notice was not warranted, it's not warranting. And I've asked people's honest opinion about the notice. They say it's unconstitutional and some people told me I should file a discrimination suit. Even though I'm not the type of person that sits with a crutch looking for discrimination, you know, I'm not that type of person, but I mean.
Yeah, there's paper and a pen right behind you. If you want to leave us some kind of contact, an email or a phone number, I'll track down either a city council member over there to put you in touch with or-
Am I loaded in my last say? The other gentleman that was before me after you guys were done talking, you said, "Is there any last say?" So I was just wondering after you said something.
Any last what?
The last gentleman that you had speaking-
Wants additional time.
No, well, you said, the last person said, you know, he gets the last say before he leaves the podium after you guys are done discussing what-
We didn't know you were here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you're fine.
So do I get my last say before I leave?
Yeah, if you're real quick, your time's about up.
Yeah, well, like I said, my father, my parents, my dad was in the military since 1966. My dad has more merits than some officers, so I just, knowing everything about politics and about people that are senators and representatives and embodiments like you guys that are here, you know, a lot of it's based upon character and, you know, family history, you know. I'm just as American as probably anybody else, you know. If not, you know, the only thing that I'm really guilty of, I told people, is that I pursued my life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness, you know, at the end of like 30. That's just my father alone. That's not my entire family. So a lot of us got stuck in a lot of the draft wars and actually fought wars overseas. You know, my dad fought more than just one war. Some people, some people have only fought one war in their lifetime. My dad has probably fought at least four or five throughout and some of them are mostly mainly missions and really weren't constituted by Congress as being wars, just missions overseas, you know, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, yeah, leave contact for us.
Anybody else want to speak to us during open session? See, no one. I'm going to close the open session and we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Ms. Brenner has requested a five-minute break.
Okay, we're back on. We're going to move along. Our first item is our consent agenda from Finance and Administrative Services.
Mr. Chair, I was standing in for the council member Crawford today as council chair and we discussed a request for approval for the county executive to enter into a contract between Watkins County and the Northwest Data Support to develop a stormwater inventory and maintenance tracking database for the municipal separate stormwater sewer system, which by the way is fondly known as MS4, and the committee moved approval and I say move.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're on to Natural Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had one item with action today and it's the version of the letter that we would be sending is this lime chartreuse thing that you have as additional information. It's a, it was a committee discussion to request to have the council send a letter to the State Department of Health asking that Western Drayton Harbor be reopened for recreational shellfish harvesting and we added the Department of Fish and Wildlife to the recipients. That was the change that we made in this version. So I would so move approval. The committee voted two to zero.
All right, and I don't think the lime green is, is the lime green actually the letter or is that a letter from the Drayton Harbor shellfish folks?
The letter. Yeah, yes, you're right.
Yeah, so we're still working off the letter we discussed this morning. We just expanded the scope of it to-
Expanded the scope, that's correct.
...Fish and Wildlife and C.C. de Blaine. All right. Ms. Brenner.
And I didn't have a chance to see the change. Was the one about also giving credit to the people in the watershed with the other, is that in there?
That was agreed to this morning in the committee and so it will give the letter to-
Oh, that's not the letter.
It's not the letter.
Right. All right. Any other discussion on the letter? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Back to the Finance Committee.
Mr. Chair, there was, these are not consented into, so they'll go in individually, correct?
Right.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, the item two is a request for approval for the county executive to enter into a contract between the Watkins County and, or RH2 Engineering, Inc., for the update of the Watkins County Coordinated Water System Plan, regional supplement in the amount of And if I remember correctly, the vote was, the vote was two to zero to move forward with Councilman Crawford absent.
And you're moving it?
And I move approval.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us. Ms. Brenner.
I brought this up today. I'll make it real succinct this evening. I believe this is way premature to be doing anything like this through a special interest committee that does not represent all the water interests when we haven't done the picture of everything we want and getting the basic background information we need before we even go with them. This also allows this committee to expand what the charge was originally. It wasn't supposed to be, but it's in there about expanding it. I feel like, you know, this is public taxpayer money that will benefit certain water interests and I think, you think it's going to be objective information we're getting, but I don't believe it because this committee has a vested interest in a certain result. And I do think that the whole reason we set up the planning unit was to make sure there was enough tension between all the interests that we would be sure whatever came through to us would be comprehensive and include all kinds of things. And I, I don't, first of all, I don't think it should happen now. I'm not saying I would never support it, but I don't think it should happen now and I think, we got a letter from Bob Carmichael that I thought very well stated a lot of the things that we need to get done before we do something like this. But I just keep thinking, if there's any way to discourage members of the planning unit, and it was very discouraging when they just basically got shut down for five years. So they're back up. I think they are doing good work and I've gone to every meeting but one and I feel like this is pretty much going to make them irrelevant to the whole thing. They are not, as someone said earlier, just one group of the many. They are the ones that by state statute we decided to create to give us discussions and recommendations on items before they would go to any special, you know, it's like we're piecemealing, taking the planning unit apart. And I have felt like, you know, the, I don't see how they can maintain the morale about doing stuff that we claim we want them to do when we do this in this order. I think this thing should be tabled for quite a while. So I'm not going to support this.
Okay, I've got one question probably for Mr. Stoica, because this is the contract for $174,776 to do this and we changed some of the scope that we were talking about. I was wondering if the money reflected in this contract, do we need to deal with that at all or is, are we fine?
Gary Stoica, Watkins County Public Works. There were three items that the resolution, which is going to come later, had budget impacts and the committee voted to take off two of them. So the only one item was the coordination with the planning unit that had an additional cost. However, the committee did also take off a discussion about the growth management hearings board decision appeal and I'm going to talk to the consultant to see if those two things just equal out.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that $30,000, $35,000 number isn't included in this 174.
It's not included in this, because this was held in committee for, so this was brought forth two weeks ago, yeah.
Before that. Okay, great, thank you. That was my question. Any other questions?
No comment.
Mr. Kremmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to concur with Councilmember Brenner. I think that to pass this now would be premature. I think it would send a negative message and convey to the hard-working members of the planning unit, I think, a message that would be disheartening and really not in good faith and would basically render, and this may be a little overstatement, but render the work and the efforts of, and the money and time invested in the planning unit null and void. And so I believe, as does Councilmember Brenner, that we ought to table this and not pass this this evening. I think it is premature and I don't think it's in the best interests of what we're trying, our goals and objectives.
So is that a motion to hold until some future point or?
Yes.
Do we need to put a time, how long we're holding or hold indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
I think indefinitely would, especially when you're dealing with government, when you use the word indefinitely, nothing gets done ever. So I would be more inclined and I would feel somewhat satisfied that if we put a time certain of no, no later than the second meeting in September.
All right, so that's your motion. Whoa.
Whee, who did that?
Someone didn't like my motion.
Oh, there they did. How did that happen?
I think the executive was trying to teach us, we're operating in the dark up here. I don't know.
Oh, right. Wink, wink.
All right, so the motion is to hold until the second meeting in September. I can't remember if we're supposed to discuss this. I think we can discuss it briefly. I'm going to support the motion because it's obvious, looking at the five of us up here, we're not going to pass this this evening. I disagree. I don't see what, holding it too, I don't see holding it that long addresses Ms. Brenner's concerns at all.
It's a start.
I think this is one of the small tools that we need to move forward so we can get some water demand forecasting and some minimum design standards. It's not taking anything away from the planning unit. We put a clause in there that is going to go to the planning unit for review before and after, so I think we need to move this forward as soon as possible, but I'll vote in favor of your motion to hold it if you want to move forward with that, just because it's obvious it's not going to pass this evening. All right, so we have the motion to hold in front of us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's held until, till no later than the second meeting in September.
And, Mr. Chair, if the clerk could specify what date that is in Sept-
Twenty ninth. Thirty eighth.
The thirty eighth, so it's almost two months from now and hopefully that we'll be able to make some headway between now and then.
All right.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee reviewed an ordinance for amending the 2014 Watkins County Budget Fourteenth Request in the Amount of $60,813 and the committee moved approval with a vote of two with Councilmember Mann absent. I recommend approval.
All right, so the motion is in front of us. Any discussion? I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Kremmon?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
So that passes unanimously, five to zero.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee also looked at an ordinance amending the Watkins County Code 3.06 grant applications to clarify requirements for grant approval and approval exemptions. And there was an updated version of this, correct?
Yellow, I think.
It was the yellow one, okay. So if you look at the yellow copy and on the back of the yellow copy is Exhibit A and the changes were to strike the word, on the first sentence of Paragraph A, we were going to strike the, strike the word "applications" and we were going to make the word "grants" plural and there was no other changes. And the committee approved this two to zero with Councilmember Mann absent and I move approval.
All right.
I'm sorry, I can't find my copy of that. Could you just read the change again?
You can.
Thank you. Yeah, there was, it was just a small, yeah, okay.
All right, it's just giving the word of the application word, okay. Any other discussion?
Oh, just that I would, I would like to see applications even though it's not required. I'd just like to see them.
So send everything to Ms. Brenner.
Just applications. I'd like to know the specifics.
All right, so we have the motion for the ordinance in front of us. Any other discussion? I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Kremmon?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes five to zero unanimously.
Mr. Chair, we have before us four items that are very similar. I'll read the first one. The Finance Committee was submitted with a request acceptance of petition and petition of security related to the formation of an irrigation district to be known as the Drayton Harbor Watershed Improvement District. The vote was taken, it was two to zero in favor with Councilmember Mann absent and I say move approval.
All right. Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I guess I first would like to ask Karen, if, not only, okay, one, my first question is, do we, I mean, are we required by law to take, to do, I mean, I feel like it's kind of like us saying we agree by putting it on the ballot. Why do we have to do this part at all? And legally, have they met their burden to put it on the ballot? Or is that something we find out later? Huh?
Just to clarify, it doesn't go on the ballot. The council office runs the election, so we do everything within our office. We don't, the auditor's office is going to help us if they can as far as people that can open envelopes and things like that for us, but we, our office is responsible for running the election. It doesn't go on the ballot in November.
When does it go on?
Well, we hope to send out ballots from our office on the third of October.
So it's going to be like a different time than the election?
Yes.
Man.
And we'll hold a public hearing on this in September. So tonight, we're just accepting the petitions and I guess at the hearing, people could come and discuss about whether they've met their legal burden.
Yeah, when do we, I mean, is it up to us? The boundaries and the legal burden part that I think-
Well, the Department of Ecology will do a study. They'll investigate the source of water, a couple of other things, and then they submit a report to the council and then that will be hopefully in our packet prior to the hearing. So then you, the council will have a hearing, but you don't have a decision in whether or not-
To accept it.
-to approve the districts.
No, but to accept this. We have this decision tonight, so what-
Right, you're, you're, you're receiving, officially receiving the petition which, and accepting the bond, which we've actually taken in and it's in the treasurer's office right now. And then this just kind of starts the clause, starts us moving forward with the steps that are required by state law to get us to the election.
Okay, and my other question is, since it would save a whole lot of money if this could go out when the ballots go out, the same, we're not even allowed to send it at the same, it just seems like it would make it really more, more people would be inclined to respond, where I understand by what I read that it's only the majority of who responds, not if people even are aware of it. So that they have to vote no instead of not voting.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, then I have questions and I see Henry's here and he sent, he sent us some information. I would like, before we do the vote, I would like to, you know, ask him on some of these questions. I don't know if anybody noticed the, there's going to be an add-on to one of the districts. Couple of questions on that. On the one that, is it Bertrand that the add-on is happening?
Yes, Henry Bearlink with the Ag District Coalition, yes, that's correct.
Well, I read this thing about process for add-on. It says petition from landowners owning more than one-half the land to be included. So this is not one person, one vote at all, is it?
That's correct.
Wow, and so once you agree to be, to be a WID, you could then have your, you could then have the decisions made by a very large, a very, a minority, a big minor, I don't, I don't mean to say a big, but a very small amount of people could be making the decisions for a whole lot of people.
Just like you do for their county. It's a representative system. That's correct. Elected representative system.
It's elected, represent, well, no, actually, no. We're elected, one person, one vote. It's not about how much land you own. So we are totally not like that.
It's based on acreage rather than on one entity per vote. That's correct. But, you know, it's the same basic principle. It's the land within that district is, chooses their representatives, those representatives then make decisions on behalf and if they don't make good ones, they can get unelected.
But doesn't the same thing hold true for electing your board? They're elected, the people with the most land get the most votes?
That's correct.
That's not democracy. We are representative democracy. That's, that's not the same thing, not even close.
That's the way the state law is set up.
That is, state law.
Well, except that I do, I did hear from somebody that Eastern Washington, even though state law says you can do this, you can add more and make it more restrictive that way to allow one person, one vote.
If that's true, it would probably be done under the Bureau of Rec Districts because they are different than the state irrigation districts. But your state irrigation district is 8703, you can read through all the details and there's no wiggle room. This is what it is. It's two votes per five acres.
Wow.
That's the way they were organized and, and the reason the county council does it, well, it's actually county commissioners, because these statutes are, you know, about 100 years old.
I'm sure they are.
And they've been somewhat updated, but this is what, we are following the laws that, as they exist, to try to do what we believe needs to be done. And we've done it twice before. This is the second time.
And I stand corrected. Actually, it was, there was one, one time and one another.
That's correct.
But those two were one at a time instead of four.
That's correct.
And the other difference is, this is, I didn't know anything about add-ons. Add-ons are like, once you do it, you can, it can be expanded and expanded and expanded by very few people controlling how it gets done.
By the property owners that choose to do, want to be involved and be added into the existing WID. It has to be, over 50% of those acres have to petition.
But that's not 50, over 50% of the property owners. It could be a very, that's what concerns me. And I hear what you're saying and it's the law, but I think people need to know, I'm, I'm hoping people will, that will put these kinds of points on the pamphlet that we send out. I mean, I didn't even understand this part. The other thing I wanted to ask you is, you talk about $5, up to $5 an acre, but it said, when I read the thing, it's $5 an acre for basic operations. Can the board in fact go higher than that for other things?
Again, the answer to that is it has to be proportional to the services that they provide. If they don't, and that's of course a judgment call, but it has to be, it could be challenged if they go beyond what, the assessment is beyond what they provide for landowners, then they are vulnerable for a challenge from those landowners.
Yeah, that's money spent for people to go to court. I get that, but I'm just saying, so you are saying, yes, they can go, because it really implied in the stuff I read that that's the highest you tax, that's the highest amount you can be, is it taxed or whatever?
Assessed, assessed is the appropriate word.
Yeah, but it can go, is there any limit? Forget about proportionality, is there any limit on how high it can go?
They don't say that, no. The statute does not limit it to a certain amount. It just says it has to be in proportion to the services provided, those landowners.
Okay, well, I, I don't think we have any choice about this. Is this the, okay, but I do want to, because I learned a whole lot. Again, it was a small, it was small. This, I'm learning, I'm always learning, you see.
So a couple of other questions, if other people can ask something. So my understanding is tonight, all we're doing is accepting that the petition is correct, it has the right number of signatures and that the bond has been paid in the right amount.
Those two items, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
But we're not condoning anything or supporting anything or?
That's not implied by that decision.
Right. Ms. Brown?
A little bit off topic, one of the questions that was raised to me was whether these proposed districts follow the watersheds or, and whether they should sort of follow the watersheds.
That's a dilemma that we faced and yeah, the answer is that we would like them to, you know, that would be the best. And I think with Bertrand and Northland, we did pretty well do that. But as we get into some of these other areas of the county that are more fractured in terms of where the ag is, those two districts are almost exclusively ag. We didn't have to try to draw areas that are less farmed or not very intensively farmed out. So these are a little more awkward, they are a little more jagged in terms of their representation of all the land within those watersheds, within those drainages. We do our best, but it's not perfect and part of that reason is that we don't want to put areas that are not intensively farmed and would really, we'd be vulnerable- and would really, we'd be vulnerable by, um, one, for having no votes and two, assessing people that aren't going to get a lot of benefit from it. Because this really is about more intense agriculture and water and water quality of drainage and things that farmers care about related to water. So the answer is a little awkward. Yes, they're, it's not perfect. We try. And that's why we do have these main, four different districts, to try to be more represented by the drainages in those areas. But, um, they're not perfect in terms of their boundaries.
And then my next question was for, Ms. Ferg says, are you satisfied that these are all legally appropriate? Is there any questions or?
On their face, I think they comply with the statute. But you know, that, there's going to be further investigation into some of the issues by Department of Ecology, specifically on the supply of water. So at this point, I don't think you need to worry about that.
I'm just thinking specifically of the, of the petitions, whether they're proper form and?
They appeared to be in proper form.
So my understanding is when we have these hearings in September, really what the hearing's about is whether the boundaries are correct. And then we can choose a name, either accept your name or we can set a name. If we want to call them Henry's WID instead of Bertrand, we can do that.
No, you don't want to do that. I did not realize that you got to choose the name.
I, I read that in the statute that the council can either approve the name or choose our own. So we, we might have a great naming contest that evening.
No, you are, it's true. Um, you're really in a position where you're facilitators for this referendum. That's really your position. And the only way that can be done under state statute is have the local authority, somebody had to be the facilitator for the vote of the people, or the acres, you know, it's, and that is represented by people. Uh, and the council is put in that position, so by the statute. But it isn't really an approval that you guys have. You guys have a facilitating role rather than approving role.
Any other questions? Mr. Kremen.
Well, it's not so much a question, but an observation. It seems that this whole process was adopted, conceived and implemented before there were charter counties. And there were three commissioners. And it was a little more, well, there were, there was a little more, uh, contact and association and connection to the, the three commissioners that were both the executive and the legislative branch rolled into one. And probably was, was more cohesive and closely connected to the, the people and landowners that are going to be affected, that are affected. And it really, in, in my opinion, this process, it doesn't lend itself very well to the home rule charter form of government. But it, it is what it is and, you know, it's, it's in our, you know, it's in our court now. And when I say court, I mean, um, you know, the ball is in our court. And, um, you know, we have to comply with the law and provide opportunities. But it really is not very conducive to our form of government, in my opinion.
Fair enough.
And I just have to just repeat, uh, our form of government that you compared it to is absolutely nothing like what you're setting up. And I, if that's what the people in the area actually want, I'm not going to stand in the way. But it's like something I, I just, I'm very, um, I'm kind of, kind of, not quite speechless, but really I've never seen any kind of voting that way before. I mean, it seemed like that kind of voting happened before we had democratic process. And it's, it's just strange.
I'll remind you, this isn't a general purpose government. This is an irrigation district.
Well, you compared it to us.
Well, in, in the sense that it's representative. I mean, that people choose their leaders and those leaders make decisions based on that trust that people put in them.
No, some people.
They are changed.
It's representative, it's representative form of government, but it's not equal representative.
It's not equal by entity. It's equal by acre. It's equal by, on a different scale.
Equal by acre?
That's right.
That's, we never, I mean, that's kind of not what we do, absolutely.
Well, there's two ways of looking at that, is there not? I mean, it's like the people that are going to have to, will have more votes, but they're also going to be paying the vast majority of the taxes and the assessments on this.
Well, you know, these are the same people who actually want certain things to happen. And another way to look at that is they're pulling along tons of other people who just don't have the property. That just seems very foreign to me. That's the word, foreign.
All right, so we have the motion in front of us to accept the petition for the Drayton Watershed Improvement District. Is there any other discussion on that one? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just want to take the opportunity to correct that I've been referring to the absence of Mr. Mann in the Finance Committee and I actually meant Mr. Crawford.
They're easy to mix up.
Well, they're both tall.
I had mentioned that Mr. Mann was absent from the Finance Committee and it was Mr. Crawford. If the cloak would be kind enough to correct the record. Uh, Mr. Chair, the next item is to request acceptance of the petitioner and petitioner's security related to the formation of the irrigation district mainly known as the Henry, sorry, the Laurel Watershed Improvement District. Uh, the vote was carried two to zero with Mr. Crawford absent and I move acceptance.
So we shouldn't go through this all again?
No, we shouldn't.
Okay.
All right, so we have the motion to accept the petition for the Laurel Watershed Improvement District. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just one with, now, because we send out an informational packet and it's done, there's information from the proponents and then we can put in whatever we deem is important to be in there? Or does it come to us for the wording of what we send out? Or, or do you guys?
Well, we just send out general information about the election itself. And any detailed information about the irrigation district, what it's going to do, how much it's going to cost, that information comes from the proposers of the districts.
And if, if there's, I saw the, the thing that was done by them on the last one and it, it didn't have, it, there's nowhere that it talks about, um, it can be more than five dollars. If I, I'm always suspicious of words and I wouldn't even have caught that.
I think it would be a good idea if you could go through that information that I gave you today and maybe just mark it up and then I can pass that information on to Henry and he can talk to the proposers and hopefully include information about your concerns.
We can't put that kind of stuff in there. It's, it's basic information. I mean, people have come up to us and asked about what it's going to cost.
Well, I think it would be best if you look through the stuff that we, you can see at the top of the page what we are sending out. I mean, it's all in one packet, but the information that comes from the district, the information that comes from the council office. And then we'll try to find some common ground.
Okay, so we can tweak a little bit what we send out.
I don't see why not.
I mean, our stuff.
I might ask, Rod Van Hoof is one of the members and proposers of the Ag District Coalition. And I, our sense is that we want to be as honest and straightforward to these voters as we can and I don't think.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's information in there. When I read it, it looked like the highest anybody can go is five dollars per acre and, or per whatever it was. And then it, there was the way that the words were written after that for the basic operations. And I thought, well, is that everything? And that's why I asked you. And, um, so I just want to make sure people know there's an unlimited, that it could be more in the future or it could be less. But it, and also that it's the vote, yeah. Is it in there?
Let me just add that there's a couple of checks on that. I mean, one, the vote, the board has to approve that. The board has to decide that they want to assess themselves as well as the others. Then they have to present an assessment role each year. There's a board of equalization process for that, that anybody who protests has, can come and present evidence for why that is not fair and why it's not just. So there is a public process in place.
I, you know something, but that's not going to solve my concern. My concern is what is legal? I'm concerned that people know when they vote to start this thing, that they have all the information.
Uh, we, we agree.
Okay, so if I?
If you give us some suggestions, we will listen.
I will do, okay, perfect. And I'll still tweak yours too.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I just had one minor question and one suggestion. Who actually collects the money? Is that going to be in the property tax statement?
Yes, it's on the property tax. Your, your treasurer collects the money. And it actually does all the accounting for us too.
Right. Um, and then the, the second is just a suggestion. I've always liked, um, on any initiative, to see the statements for and against initiative. And if you can.
I think we tried to basically honor that last time to say, hey, there's a, there's some, there's some pluses and there are minuses. And as always, you have to make the choice on whether or not, but we will try to honor that.
Well, it's, I think, yeah, I think I know what you're asking about. And what's in the thing that we got from Dana showed, um, questions asked and their, their responses to it. It didn't show a pro and con. It showed everything from the perspective of the proponents. And I do feel like, um, I'm not trying to stop it from happening, but I have such a hard time dealing with, you know, a system like that, that I just want to make sure people really understand what they're getting into.
So we'd suggest like one of the questions should be, can this district raise their assessment rates to twenty times what they are today? And that can be one of the questions.
You could say it easier, there's no limit.
And the answer would be there's no limit.
Yeah.
Aside from, you know?
I think we can.
That would be a way to kind of reflect the plus and the minus. That's what we tried to do last time.
All right, so we have the motion to accept the Laurel Watershed Improvement District in front of us. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero unanimously.
Mr. Chair, in the Finance Committee, we discussed item seven, which was to request acceptance of the petition and petitioner's security relating to the formation of an irrigation district to be known as the South Lyndon Watershed Improvement District. The vote was carried two to zero with Councilmember Crawford absent and I move approval.
All right, we have the motion to accept the petition for the South Lyndon Watershed Improvement District. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, we also, I'm sorry.
None, passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, item eight, we, also in committee, we discussed the request to request acceptance of petition and petitioner's security relating to the formation of an irrigation district to be known as the Sumas Watershed Improvement District. The vote was carried two to zero with Councilmember Crawford absent and I so move approval.
All right, the motion for the Sumas Watershed Improvement District is in front of us.
That's the purple version.
Oh, yeah.
The purple substitute one. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero unanimously.
Thank you.
You're off and running.
Mr. Chair, there is a resolution discussed today approving a local agency participating agreement between the Watkin Camp, between Watkin County and the Washington State Department of Transportation and authorization for the county executive to enter into a partnership agreement between Watkin County and the Washington State Department of Transportation to construct three compact roundabouts on Slater Road. This passed two to zero in committee with Councilmember Crawford absent and I so move approval.
All right, we have the resolution in front of us and the motion. Ms. Brenner.
Oh, I'll move approval, but I also wanted to say that, um, I think it was Joe Rutan told us today that also they're requesting, um, cooperate, funding cooperation from the City of Bellingham and the City of Ferndale. And that the City of Ferndale has already indicated, um, I won't say a willingness, but support of doing that. I haven't heard from Bellingham yet.
Right, and I think he also said that the eliminations already provided support.
Well, that's already in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we have the resolution in front of us. Mr. Brown has moved approval. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We're on to Public Works Health and Safety.
We discussed at great depth the commencing of the coordinated water system plan update process and we moved it forward and I move we hold it in committee until the second meeting in September, which is the thirtieth.
All right, so the same motion as earlier to hold in committee and no longer than the second meeting in September.
I didn't say no longer than, I'm just saying.
Till the second meeting in September. Mr. Brown.
Um, I, I do have a conflict with doing the resolutions after we've agreed to do the, doing the funding.
We didn't.
No, but, but it's, that's why it appeared on the agenda.
Oh, I do too.
And I, and I'd like to ask that for the, when this does come back up, that we deal with the resolution first and then the funding second.
Okay.
Yeah, we could transfer the meeting times if we even have to, or the day, you know? Okay, that's a good idea.
And I don't know what the right process is, but I'd actually request that be the process going forward.
All right, so the motion is in front of us to hold this resolution until the second meeting in September, September thirtieth. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. Executive appointments, request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Julie Martin and Annette Davis to the Northwest Senior Services Board. Mr. Kremen has moved approval. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Introduction items, we have three items. Is there a motion to introduce them?
So move.
All right, we have the motion in front of us to introduce these three items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero unanimously. Committee reports, are there, I think we've covered all the committees. Is there anything coming out of the, any of the other committees? Anything from Natural Resources? Planning, Public Works?
Probably.
All right, how about other items from council members?
Started that end, I got some.
Other items or announcements?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's combine them.
Uh, just for the sake of expediency, uh, I just want to let my, my colleagues know that the, um, National Association of Counties had their annual conference in New Orleans. I did not attend, uh, but I was honored by, uh, my colleagues in that, uh, in that organization to be reappointed to the Large Urban County Caucus, which is a very select number of, of county officials, um, that are appointed to that, uh, that, that caucus. And we meet annually with the officials at the White House and it's, uh, it has a lot of influence and furthers the causes of all counties, not just the, the large ones, but all counties at the highest levels of both Congress and our executive branch.
Ms. Brenner.
Okay, two things. On July twenty-fifth, I helped serve lunch at the Project Homeless Connect at the Bellingham High School. And I don't know when I've ever had such a, an uplifting experience. I told them, this is so much more fun than council meetings. And I made them promise to let me do it next year. I got a, I have a tremor and I'm, I didn't know how I was going to be a server. They let me serve the casserole and it sticks to your spoon and I didn't make a mess or anything. And everybody appreciated it. It was like, the rest of the day, I was just walking on a cloud. It was wonderful. And then business more. There was a presentation at the new emergency management coordination center on Soundway and it was on the Oso disaster. And so many things that happened that we are, not only did we learn from county, uh, emergency management people, but that we actually do things so much better. One of the biggest things they emphasized is all these emergency management people used to, you know, being in charge and all this stuff, it was extremely, and it, it, they didn't do a good job of leaving their egos at the door. And we, this, our system here is so well-integrated that there's never an ego issue. And I mean, people are like, they know what to do, how to do it and everything. So we have a big head start if, if God forbid, anything happens here. I just thought it was great. And in October, they're going to have, um, a presentation about rail issues. And I think it's October second. And I, I think their presentations are great. It went on, I want to say for an hour and a half, two hours on this. And I was sorry when it was over, it was so interesting. Not, you know, it was not uplifting, but it was extremely interesting information. So, um, I think we should go to as many of those, apparently they're going to be giving a number of them in the future, so there. number of them in the future, so, there.
All right, Mr. Buchanan?
Nothing.
Mr. Brown?
I just wanted to, so I had the, a couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of sitting on a berry picker, traveling in the fields, watching that process, and last week, I had the pleasure of going to one of the berry processing plants and seeing that process, and was very impressed, and again, struck by how much employment the industry provides. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that and say how much I appreciate it. And then, it's a little bit off topic, but I feel I have to mention it in part because we talked about swing to live before the presentation. Last night, I made the mistake of turning on the TV rather late, and I watched a movie, I was going to watch the first 15 minutes, so I ended up watching the whole thing. It was called Taking Chance, and it was an Iraq casualties journey back from Iraq to his final resting place, and it was a very moving movie. And I highly recommend anybody have a look at it, so...
All right, I was just going to say, because we've alluded to it a couple times, that this is the council's last meeting until September 16th, we're taking our summer break, that's why all the staff down here's got big grins on their face, they're done with us for over a month. So, but the rest of the county continues to operate. Personally, I just got invited today to be at the White House next week to talk about climate change, so the person that spoke over here in favor, I'll pass that along, and the person over here that said that we were full of it, I'll pass that along also. And I guess we'll see you in the middle of September.
See you in September, like the song.
We're adjourned.